2.0 additions, deletions, corrections, modifications to the board agenda. Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
3.0 approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, motion by Kathy, second by Julia, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. And now we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. If our ECE students would like to come forward and lead us in the pledge, that would be wonderful.
Go on.
(audience clapping) 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 4.0 special recognitions. Tonight we are recognizing ECE and Central Office. We will begin with ECE. Dr. Ziegler, if you'll please...
Thank you for having me here for this opportunity to introduce our teacher and support staff members from 2021. I'm going to first introduce Anita Antal. Anita has been with ECE since 2015. Anita is a Frog Room teacher, and she's actually the teacher of these two young gentlemen here for last year. Anita is a leader in our school, and I was not at all surprised when she was chosen as Teacher of the Year. Anita teaches the three and four-year-olds in our Park Day program during the school year, and she also teaches kindergarten warm-up, which is summer school for those kiddos headed into kindergarten. Anita is in two very important positions in our school also. She serves as our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Representative, and she also serves as our Wellness Representative. And she does an amazing job at both of them. So Anita, will you come on up so I can congratulate you?
Take pictures tonight, Anita. Congratulations. Congratulations. We have...
Okay, our Support Staff Member of the Year for 2021 was not able to attend this evening, but that Support Staff Member is Lori Beal. She was actually one of my first teaching partners over 25 years ago. She's been a constant in the Park Day preschool program for all of the years that she's worked with ECE. She's gifted with being calm and supportive to her students. She always has that just calmness that helps the kiddos so much. She's caring and compassionate, and her students and families absolutely love her. So I was really happy to announce Lori as our Support Staff Member of the Year, and I wish she could be here tonight to join for this. But I know that she would love to be here. Thank you.
So if you will make sure Lori gets that.
All right. Thanks. (audience clapping) And then I want to bring the two boys back up. Orson and Bryce, will you join me? Go ahead and turn around and look at your moms. There you go. Okay, so Orson and Bryce are friends, and they're in the Frog Room this year. And they are both great guys, as you can see. I ask for some words from teachers about both of these guys. So Orson is always a good friend to all of his peers, and he also has a very positive attitude all the time. Bryce is very kind-hearted, and he loves to come to school every day. These guys do a great job representing our ECE students, and thank you for being here tonight, guys.
All right, thank you, guys. I got a couple...
Well, it's my pleasure to recognize Jessica Franklin, the District Lead Nurse, as the Central Office Staff Member of the Year. She's had an extraordinarily difficult and challenging job the last few years, and nursing obviously is so important and never so important as it's been the last few years. She has helped guide the district with her expertise and her advice and her connections in the health community through an extremely tough time, through this pandemic. I don't know where we'd be without Jessica. We didn't hire her just to be our COVID-19 advisor, but that's the job she's had for the last three years, and we appreciate everything that she does. She's an extremely hard worker, and she is on a well-deserved break tonight. So we excused her from this meeting, but we congratulate her nonetheless. So congratulations to Jessica Franklin, District Lead Nurse.
(audience clapping)
This one's not working either.
There you go. Try that one.
All right, congratulations to everyone who was recognized tonight, and we will take a minute so that if you don't want to stay for the business portion of the meeting, you may leave. We will move to 5.0 resolutions. We have three consent resolutions this evening: Teacher of the Year, Support Staff Persons of the Year, and the graduating class of Limburg High School. Do I have a motion to approve the three consent resolutions as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Matt? Second. Second by Megan? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. At this time, we will move to 6.0 citizen communication regarding agenda items. There are none this evening, correct? So we will move on to 7.0 communications and 7.01 calendar of events. Board Secretary?
Oh, geez. Sorry, I wasn't ready. Okay. Thanks. All right, so some district events for this month. The district offices are closed on Fridays through July, so only open Monday through Thursday. On June 30th, we will have a special Board Meeting of Education, Board of Education meeting at 10:00 a.m. here at Central Office. The district offices are closed in observance of Independence Day on July 4th, and on July 20th, there is a board workshop at 4:30 and a regular meeting at 7:00.
Thank you. And we will do 7.02, Report of Meetings. If anyone has state or other meetings or parent group meetings to share from the past month?
I finished my training for new board members, so they require you to do 10 hours or 18 total, so eight hours online and then 10 hours in person, and I finished that last week.
That's great. Anyone else?
I attended the May SSD Governing Council meeting. It was June, sorry. It was last week. They had to, because of the new census, they had to redraw their sub-district lines, so a couple districts moved from one to a different sub-district. So their Board of Education member might have changed, their representative. Their CSIP and strategic plan was approved, and the budget for next fiscal year was also approved. They are adding some new staff members. You can view all those additions on their board docs.
I just want to take this time, since it wasn't really a meeting, but we were all there. Graduation was great. It was wonderful. I know Dr. Cochran's in the room, and he and his staff did a wonderful job, and it was heartwarming and awesome as usual.
And how many students?
The biggest yet, 550.
It's a big graduating class. 7.03 announcements. We have one announced this evening regarding the BOE Advisory Committee applications. The Limburg Schools Board of Education would like to thank members who have served on one of our Board Advisory Committees over the past year or two years. Their dedication, input, and advice have been extremely beneficial on issues that affect our district. The Board is excited to now welcome new members on several Board of Education Advisory Committees, including Finance, Student Life, Teaching and Learning, and Technology. These committees allow Board members to seek input and advice from community members and promote widespread involvement and participation on issues that affect our district. Each committee meets regularly, and Cabinet members provide reports at monthly board meetings. Committee members will include community members, parents, Board members, and district employees. These committee members will be appointed prior to the start of the school year and will serve two-year terms. Committee members must be patrons of Limburg Schools. Applications will be emailed to all Limburg families later this month, and new members will be notified this summer. We will now review our upcoming Board of Education meeting agendas. Is this better?
I'm ready now. We're scheduled to meet on June 30th at 10:00 a.m. for our special Board of Education meeting, and at this meeting, we'll get to see Joelle at her brightest and review the proposed 2223 budget. We'll also meet on July 21st for a board workshop and regular meeting. The workshop topics are currently being planned, and at the regular meeting, we will talk about regular business items such as human resources and financial reports, the further record reports on transportation program evaluation, annual secretary of the board report, and career technical education program evaluation.
Thank you.
The announcements that you made had July 20th, and this one has July 21st.
July 21st.
I think it's the 21st.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did I say 20?
It was actually written the 20th, too, and I just noticed the difference.
Oh, got it. Thanks.
7.05 Board of Education member appointments. Each year, the Board of Education reviews our committee assignments and committee obligations that the Board is responsible for have been reassigned for next school year, and the list of that is on board docs, but I think most of you are aware of it. And we will do our 7.06 MSBA Board Report for June.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the MSBA Board Report for the month of June. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the recently concluded 2022 regular session of the Missouri General Assembly. Despite some proposed legislation that could have been detrimental to school boards in public schools, there were some significant positives, including a substantial increase in student transportation funding. It will be the first time since 1991 that the state's share of student transportation is fully funded. MSBA's Director of Governmental Relations, Brandt Shields, tells us several bills aimed at school boards did not cross the finish line this year.
We worked on a lot of issues this year, specifically regarding school board member recall, moving school board member elections to November, and making school boards run on partisan tickets. You know, there was some momentum out there, but really, I think we got our message across that Missourians don't need more partisan politics involved in their school board elections, and I think we were very successful in getting that message across.
Shields says an education omnibus bill with more than 30 provisions, including changes to the way literacy is taught, and support for what's known as competency-based education, was passed by the General Assembly. We will be providing you with more details on all the provisions of that bill. Shields says now that the session is over, it's still important for Board members and administrators to stay in touch with legislators and candidates for the legislature during this election year.
Absolutely. I believe that our school board members definitely need to get involved with those who are running for office, because those who are running to represent you in Jefferson City need to know what the concerns and the issues that are going on in your community are, and the best way to find that out is through our school system. Schools are the heartbeats of our communities, and you all are their elected leaders. So please reach out to those who are running for office and get to know them, because when it comes time next year when they're voting on important public education bills, they'll have a relationship with you, and you'll be able to talk to them about how those issues could affect districts in their hometown.
Shields says the advocacy work of school board members paid significant dividends during this year's legislative session. The legislature did address the issue of teacher pay this year by approving Governor Parsons' recommendation to increase the baseline teacher salary from $25,000 to $38,000 a year through a matching grant program. Under the program, the state would provide local school districts with 70% of the salary costs needed to meet the new minimum starting salary, and local school districts would provide the remaining 30%. While that plan may be helpful to some school districts in the state, much more is needed to improve Missouri's low teacher salaries and help attract and retain teachers in our public schools. MSBA's immediate past president, Linda Doherty, says Missouri needs a sustainable plan for raising teacher salaries across the board.
Our state is facing a teaching shortage, and it will only continue to grow in the future if we do not find practical, sustainable solutions to increase pay for well-deserving teachers. Education is critical to the health of our communities. Teachers train and equip our students with the skills they need to enter the workforce. The workforce availability drives economic development within our state and creates jobs within our communities, which ultimately affects the quality of life for each of our students and families.
Doherty is the president of the NICSa Board of Education that recently passed a resolution urging the state to partner with Missouri's public schools to have the revenue needed to provide long-term sustained salaries for all teachers. A Blue Ribbon Commission, established by the State Board of Education, charged with developing recommendations to address teacher recruitment and retention challenges in Missouri, is beginning its work this month. MSBA past president Rhonda Gilstrap of Blue Springs is a member of that Blue Ribbon Commission. MSBA's positions on state and federal education issues are determined by the Delegate Assembly that will be meeting this coming November. If your school board has a position statement on an issue you would like to submit to the Advocacy Committee for consideration, you can do so this summer. The Advocacy Committee reviews those proposals and makes recommendations to the Delegate Assembly that determines MSBA's positions on issues. Make your plans now to attend the 2022 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with Association of School Administrators, to be held November 3rd through 6th in Kansas City. The event will once again feature some outstanding general session speakers, along with a wide variety of concurrent sessions, many presented by school leaders from districts throughout the state. Registration information for the conference will be posted on the MSBA website. And don't forget the 2022 Safe Schools and Colleges Forum, sponsored by MSBA's Center for Education Safety, will be held this year on November 3rd in conjunction with the Annual Conference in Kansas City. Past and present members of local school boards can be nominated for the 2022 Paul Morris Community Service Award. This award is for those who have shown an outstanding commitment to community service. Nominations will be accepted through Friday, July 1st, and the award will be presented at the MSBA Annual Conference. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Allow us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
Thank you, Colin. We will move to 8.0 Special Reports, and we will start with Dr. McKinney for HR.
Yes, we met this month. We talked about the Personnel Report, the monthly Personnel Report, as well as some negotiations planning, and we'll meet again in July.
Thank you, and we'll move to Joelle for Finance.
The Finance Committee met on Tuesday. They get the information on Friday and review everything that's in the board packet this evening as far as finances are related. We also have a School Finance Minute where we dive into something more in-depth. This time, we talked a little bit about student activity funds and how those accounts are set up in the district budget. Those are the accounts for fundraising or cheerleaders. It's not taxpayer dollars, but it's what they fundraise to go on trips, like Space Camp and things like that. So that's it.
Thank you.
And the Facilities Committee did not meet, and we won't meet until the first of the year.
And then Dr. Sparks is not here this evening, but Student Life, Teaching and Learning, and Technology also don't meet during the summer months. There's no report for those. We will move to 9.0 Action Items by Consent. We have action items by consent 9.01 to 9.15. Would anyone want to remove any of these for individual consideration? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve consent items 9.01 to 9.15?
So moved.
Motion by Mike? Second? Second by Megan? Is there any discussion or any questions?
I just wanted to say that our free meals are done. And so I think we've sent out some correspondence already, and I'm sure we'll continue to over the summer, so families can prepare for that. I also saw in the call today that the county library is offering free meals at lunchtime this summer. So if anybody is needing, you know, in need, there's some free meals out there. And I think that's it. Thank you. I'm looking at Joelle, because she handles that part of it.
I have a question for Joelle also.
Okay.
For the facility use rates, I know that we've kind of, we've done those A, B, and C groups. Where are we at within the process for the D group?
The D group is on our compass goals as it implement this year, and so we are working through what those rates would be by looking at benchmark districts that will be in play at some point this year.
Okay, thank you. And then I also wanted to say, under contracts, I appreciate that there was a description in the breakdown of it. It made it a little easier to know what they were for. So thank you. Appreciate that improvement. So, all right, we had our motion and our second. Any other questions?
Do you foresee us having a, in Parkway, they're experiencing bus driver shortages. Do you see, since we have transportation service on here? Do you foresee that?
That's coming up later, too. We address that a little bit later when we talk about the rate of pay, so that should help. We also have a new director and a new router with First Student, so just meeting with them as they have their, come into their first year, I think we're going to see some good things happen with drivers. Yep, they're recruiting constantly and keeping up with new ideas, so.
Okay, thanks.
Are we ready to vote? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. We have four individual action items this evening. 10.01 Limburg Schools Pandemic Response Plan. Dr. McKinney.
Thank you. The Green Light Plan that has guided us through the last several years has been revised. It's now called the District Limburg Schools Pandemic Response Plan. And really, the revisions are designed so that the district can respond in the event of any airborne virus. The new plan outlines a variety of tools and strategies available to the district to keep students safe. It's designed to be flexible and provide agility. As we learned during COVID-19, things change very quickly, and the district needs to be able to respond to those changes. The new plan, one thing the new plan does not have is there are no automatic triggers based on a single metric, such as positive cases. But the new plan allows the district to take into account all pertinent data. For example, we found out that CDC advised the focus during this time in this mutation of COVID-19 is hospital beds, which is still very, very low, even though positivity rates have gone up. So it's a change in how the data is evaluated. And so we've reflected those changes. We don't want a single metric to trigger things, but rather look at all the data and be able to make an informed decision. You know, in the old plan, masking, for instance, had a very specific data point that we would, without question, go to masks, and we've removed that just so we can be more flexible and respond as needed to, you know, whatever airborne virus. Hopefully, this will be a plan that sits on a shelf, and we don't have to implement, but we are realistic in that we've researched this. I would also mention that the 60-person task force that was tasked with designing the original Green Light Plan several years ago was consulted about this revision, as well as our medical community, and was met with approval. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Matt?
Second.
Second by Kathy. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion...
Sorry, I was late.
Oh. Motion passes 7-0. Moved to 10.02, First Student Transportation Annual Contract Escalation. Joelle.
That's me. We do have a five-year contract with First Student. We went to bid in 2018 and accepted a contract to continue services with First Student from July 1, 2019, for a five-year term through June 30, 2024. The original rate in that contract was a 3% increase annually for the five-year period. With everything that has happened with the economy and with the workforce, support staff wages across, you know, not just in school districts, but across the board as far as people that are working at restaurants or working at grocery stores, those support positions have changed, and those rates have gone up. Bus drivers, as you know, we do have had shortages with them, just like any other staff member in other categories, support positions. So we looked at, they approached us about increasing the rate of pay for those folks. Actually, we share a bus garage with several other schools, and those other schools had already moved forward with rate of pay increases for their drivers. And so they wanted to look at that and then change the contract term for the final two years. So this is an amendment to the current contract. If you look at the support on the document, it shows the current rate and then the amended rate per route. We pay per route, not the driver specifically, and that rate has gone up slightly. So that is what this amendment is for, so that we can pay our drivers a little bit more, hopefully start the year off with staff. Like I said, we are recruiting heavily. I think having a higher rate that's compensable with our surrounding schools will help us be competitive in that. So the rate increase is going from 3% annually to 3.9% for the final two years. I ask that you guys approve that.
And no longer, they're no longer extending the fleet age from five to seven?
Oh, yeah. That was a correction on here in the contract, which we just said to you today, because they were looking at a revision. They had the age of the fleet going from five to seven, and I questioned that because I knew we had got a couple new buses this year already, and then they said that was an error. So the age of our fleet will remain at five years. So that's important to keep our newer buses en route. We do pay a little bit more to keep our fleet newer, but it's worth it.
Great. Does this require, you know, the payments by bus, does it require a certain number of routes?
We determine the number of routes. We try to be as efficient as possible. We have 39 routes right now. We've been very strategic in how we load our buses and how parents inform us of who's riding. We have not added a bus in five years. We just really look at the routes annually and shift kids on buses based on who signs up to ride. Right now, for a school year term, the cost of a new route is about $75,000, which is the cost of, you know, about a teacher. And so we know we'd like to put that money towards the teacher rather than a bus, and so we're very strategic about how we load our buses.
This is just a comment that I'm sure everybody shares. I was really pleased that the state came through with the funding for the buses. That was a big deal.
It is great, yeah. I haven't seen it in my career, like they said, a long time ago. Unfortunately, it's only a one-time funding, so we'll get it next year. I think it might help with some of these, hopefully, maybe the fuel charges will be better by the start of the year. We haven't seen any fuel surcharges yet, knock on wood. But yes, we are very appreciative of that. It's about $600,000 for our district for one year.
Do I have a motion to approve the acknowledgement of the amendment to the First Student Service Contract, five-year term of July 2019 to June 2024, to include annual escalation rate increase from 3% to 3.9% for the final two years?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Julia, second by Megan? Questions, discussions? Motion by Julia, second by Megan. Questions, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. 10.03, Southwest Food Service Excellent Contract Renewal. Joelle.
This is another one of the annual things that we look at every year, our food service contract. We did go out to bid for that. This, I talk about this bid on food service is a little bit different than transportation because it is, we have a lot of oversight from the state because it's funded federally and with state dollars. So, when we go out to bid, the state is very involved in how we select vendors. I will say we have representatives from SFE here tonight. We have Alfredo Carthagena, our director, and then Mike Butler, the regional manager for the program. These rates, how we pay SFE is, all of the expenditures for the program, we actually reimburse them for the expenditures, and then we pay SFE pennies on the meal for participation. Even during this last year, when everything was free, we still get federal dollars for that. So, we did have a very large influx of federal dollars, a lot of participation because all meals were free. So, it'll be interesting to see how that goes next year as we go back to charging for the meals. I'm hoping that some kids got used to eating breakfast and lunch, and we'll continue, participation will continue in the program. The rates, fee increase for next year is noted on here, and we ask that you approve that. Any questions about the food service? We're ready to get back to normal with food service. We've been with SFE. This will be going into the third year, and they really hadn't had a good year since they started. As soon as we hired them, March of the next year, we went into COVID, and so some of the programming that they wanted to put in place, we're hoping that we can execute this year. They have a lot of great ideas. We just haven't got to see those yet.
So, at this time, most of our commodities have been used?
Oh, they have done great with the commodities. We have no commodities in off-site storage. How SFE manages commodities, which is the free food from the state, anything that's a commodity in the market gets provided to schools as a supplement. I think our commodity value exceeds, it's right around $150,000 a year in food value. SFE's approach on commodities is they have it processed into different items. We don't just get the big, large turkey shipped to us and put them in storage. So, our commodity inventory is well-maintained, and it's been excellent.
Sounds good. And then will we, next year, possibly move, I know I heard from elementary students, they didn't like that there weren't choices.
Right, they didn't. That was kind of a product of COVID and the ease of getting them through the line and then having every single kid eat. We are going back to choices at the elementary. We're going back to all the standard things, salad bars, which were great at the elementary level, salad bars. But when COVID came, we had to remove some of those things. So, all of the programming that they promised us at the inception of their contract will be rolled out. Brand name pizza, I remember we had a student at one time come and speak at public session about, she liked the brand name pizza in there. So, we're continuing down that path. Food truck was an exciting thing that we were looking at implementing and weren't able to do that. You're going to see a lot of good things happening at food service this year.
Good.
So, I look forward to it.
Good.
And for the families that might need some additional assistance with going back to paying, they can still apply?
Yes, we have the free and reduced application. So, that is an application families fill out. If they qualify or eligible, they can, 40 cents for reduced lunch, and then, of course, free lunch. I'm excited about that this year because that application is going to be digital. We've been working on that for five years to make that digital. We are actually piloting it right now with summer school at Sappington because we're going to provide, it's only half-day summer school, but we're providing breakfast. And we've already had some people fill out the digital form. So, we think that's just going to make things a little bit easier. It kind of walks people through like TurboTax and asks them the questions. It's not just looking at a form and having it paper. I do want to take this time, though, to thank SFE staff and that through the COVID process. They have been working every month, 12 months, in a nine-month thing, serving meals to students. When we were off during COVID, you know, we had the drive-through, and people could come pick it up. We had people delivering food to people's houses, which is normally a nine-month position for their staff. They've been working 12 months for the last couple of years. And it's also an area where we're looking at increasing the rate of pay, the base rate of pay, because of staffing shortages. Our leadership team with SFE has been out at the front lines, serving students. We've had principals serving students. We've had some staff issues there. So, there will be a rate of pay increase for those employees at SFE as well.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the renewal of the SFE food service contract for the 2022-2023 split year as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by Kristy. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. 10.04, Student Data Privacy Vendor Agreement. Do I have a motion to approve the authorizing use of the Missouri National Data Privacy Agreement?
So moved.
Motion by Megan.
Second.
Second by Matt. And are there any questions? And Dominic is here. If we, anything else? Anyone? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion passes seven to zero. 11.01, For the Record. We have two For the Record reports this evening. The Board of Education Agenda Planner 2022 to 2023 First Reading and the Food Service Program Evaluation. Board members should review these and contact cabinet members with any questions. And we don't have any further reports, so we will move to 12.0, Citizen Communication Regarding Non-Agenda Items. So, we will hear citizen comments regarding topics that are not on tonight's agenda. We do have three citizens who have signed up to speak. Pull up my... So, when I call your name, please come forward, and you will have three minutes to speak. And if, just, our comments are included in our monthly meeting agenda as an opportunity for community members to address the board on issues of importance pertaining to student learning and school district operations, and if we can be respectful, kind, and courteous, and remain quiet while others speak. Thank you. And we will start with Dawn Herbeck? I'm sorry.
Rebeck.
Rebeck. I was like, that H is silent, and I just could not make my mouth do it. I'm sorry.
As a parent, my daughter is, oh, man. I was on a roll. As a parent, my daughter is my responsibility, and therefore, I need to be aware of conversations that are occurring with her and teachers, administrators. She is a minor, and therefore, my responsibility. If there were a legal issue and the police were involved, it is the law to have parent present when a juvenile is involved. I took this responsibility in the court of law at her adoption date that I do take, and I do not take this responsibility lightly. When can I expect to have that opt-out form? The recent controversy around literacy is also something I am concerned with. We are fortunate to have benefited from the reading specialist at Dressel, but for some children, this is not enough. I was curious when I read a recent article in the New York Times pointing to a field literacy program being revamped. Lucy Culkins is the name of the program, and Limburg is still using it. Several districts locally apparently trialed it but stopped because of poor performance with it. In the New York Times article, it even mentions a Limburg parent who has been critical about the program. Crazy question. Why is this parent not asked to be involved with the literacy program selection and use her experience and expertise? Rather than recreating the wheel in regards to literacy, can't we learn from her experience and have her help the district? Also, some stats from DESI were compiled for 2020 and 2021 and compared to 2018 and 2019. Yes, the site that I found them on is ShowMe Institute. It does not come without criticism, that website, but the data is from DESI. The grave changes are startling in regards to the decline, and I am providing you a copy so you can also see the decline. I am sure that you're aware of this decline. Can the district just be honest and say, yes, we are concerned? All the, okay, thanks. Oh, my God. Yeah, you got it. Da-da-da. We just want honesty and transparency. The recent arrest of the teacher and activities of the school, he was involved with the polo team, Gay Straight Alliance, and Youth in Government, makes many parents very concerned and questioning what's happening with our district. A teacher coach was also featured in the Oxygen documentary, sorry, Case Died With Her, that also occurred in our district. Please do not say this happens everywhere because it shouldn't, and that is not an excuse for this behavior. The email I received offered suggestions just on Monday that will be discussed at your July 21 board meeting. This is a great first step, but is it enough? And my next question was, if Mr. Grant Gomer, who was, again, has two counts of statutory sonomy and sexual contact with students, was he on the review book committee? If he was, I would hope that those books would be reevaluated because, again, he, yeah, he has got concerns. So, thank you for letting me be here. Limburg has done better in the past. We can do better in the future. No, we will not make everyone happy. But I truly believe, if you give respect to all the shareholders with conversation and discussion, we, as a district, will gain more and possibly be a role model for others like we have been in the past. Thank you.
Next is Ms. Mary Lee Sarr.
This month, after a Limburg teacher was charged with two counts of second-degree statutory sonomy and one count of sexual contact with a student, our superintendent released a statement saying, "Schools are places where students should always feel safe." He didn't say where students should always be safe. His statement said, "F-E-E-L, feel safe." This statement highlights the cognitive distortions that this administration is imposing on our students. Does this board and administration feel that they are doing what is in the best interest of students? Well, here's the reality. The academics in our district are in a noticeably dramatic decline. Is the goal to graduate students that feel smart, even when they haven't mastered the basics of reading, writing, grammar, and math? How can you create a love of learning when half or more of our students don't know what true learning is because they are not grade-level proficient in their learning? Does this board and administration feel they are listening to local stakeholders? Again, here's the reality. A group called LEAD, organized in our district, likely with the help of outside influencers, in June of 2020, they requested that the district hire a DEI director. That request, which added a $100,000 or more administrative salary plus benefits position, was met within a year. And that individual left after less than a year. Now, the district is immediately looking for a replacement and paying even more in salary and benefits for this position. Near the other end of the spectrum, a locally organized grassroots Limburg Parent Literacy Group has been requesting since 2017 that the district provide explicit and systematic phonics instruction for our students. There is also a Missouri state law requiring this for grades K through 3. Yet, this administration and this board has not met this request. I'm sure it feels good to the administration to grow their size and power and to survey our students to see how they feel so they can coordinate on more and more social interventions. However, we need to balance feelings with the reality of declining academics in the Limburg district. Let's get rid of the touchy, and let's balance this feely with some reality. I request the board pass a resolution immediately to put a hiring freeze on the administration and administrative assistant positions and refocus our education dollars and classroom time on evidence-based instruction for our students, appropriate training for this evidence-based instruction for our teachers, and curriculum that focuses on grade-level expected skills and the general necessary wisdom and knowledge our Limburg students need for academic, job, family, and life success. Thank you.
Mr. Mike Mueller.
Limburg has repeatedly denied teaching critical race theory despite its core agenda being fine time and time again in school curriculum. Social-emotional learning, on the other hand, is something the board does not hide from and has praised it in past meetings. But what is social-emotional learning, or SCL as it's commonly known? SCL allows teachers not trained in the field of psychology to practice psychology on unsuspecting students, and the ultimate goal is creating critical consciousness, i.e. identity Marxism, into a student's mind. It creates vulnerability in the idea that a student's parents, grandparents, and other respected elders did not see things properly. SCL introduces problems into a student's life, produces turmoil with them, then offers a solution to the problem caused by SCL. Sounds quite Hegelian. This would explain why students are continually subjected to surveys. These surveys reinforce the critical consciousness that SCL is designed to foster while serving as a data mining tool. But where does the information from these surveys go? Is it held against the students? And why are concerned parents instructing their children not to participate in them? This is part of the larger SCL agenda that reinforces the idea of trauma. Look, everyone probably has an element of trauma in their lives. Some people have withstood more trauma than others, but even those with the best fortune and opportunities have experienced some level of trauma, hardship, pain, and suffering. It's part of the human condition that none of us can escape. Today's kids, though, given the endless mask mandates, social distancing, and quarantining they've experienced over the last two years, have probably experienced more trauma than previous generation as the rapid increase in youth anxiety and depression shows. Given the normal challenges of life combined with the craziness COVID has introduced, why does Limburg feel obligated to further reinforce this trauma by carrying library books like The Bluest Eye and Crank, Living Dead Girl, and The Girl Who Fell From the Sky? It's clearly a priority to fortify trauma into the psyche of innocent minds. Furthermore, times have apparently changed as the three Rs of reading, writing, and arithmetic from yesteryear have been replaced in importance by equity, inclusion, and diversity. Parents have caught on to this nonsense, and that's why, according to the New York Times, at least 1.2 million students have left public schools in the last two years. We know Limburg's curriculum isn't unique to this district, but what is troublesome is this emphasis on SCL, as well as equity, inclusion, and diversity, is infecting once untouchable subjects like math and science. It's everywhere, including the admin side. In fact, there is currently a job opening for the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, paying $100,000 as a starting salary. My question is, how will this position help Limburg turn young minds into critical thinkers, and how will it prepare them for their future careers and vocations? Given that Limburg was once a number-one school that has dropped to number 76, you'd think some introspection would be in order. Instead, we're seeing nothing but a doubling down on destructive ideas that will only result in lower test scores, more division in the community, and more children ill-prepared for the rigors of the real world. Thank you.
Thank you to everyone for coming tonight and addressing the Board of Education. We will continue with the remaining agenda items. 13.0, Recess. We have already conducted our executive session, and there is no need, so we will move to 15.0, Adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn Board Meeting 1555?
So moved.
Motion by Kathy.
Second.
Second by Matt. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Board Meeting 1555 is adjourned.